So Mary knows when to turn the camera on. Don't tell bad jokes until after I do the hammer. All right, nine o'clock. Bid opening and award root of the Olympian Henderson Award Crick Grapple. Key Bone.
Yeah, we received, it's another Forest Service shared scheduling project. Received two bids. From Meadow Creek Contracting and Haskins Escavating. The first bid we're gonna open is Meadow Creek Contracting. Meadow Creek Contracting bids on the Roto project, one hundred and fifty-four thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars. Next would be Haskins. Haskins bid, excavating bid is two hundred and sixty-six thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Do you wanna look at these Jared? I didn't get the engineering estimate, but there's gotta be. Yeah, I usually want those after.
Five miles, five miles of distance for?
It is five and a half, yes. And there's five hundred thousand in this agreement, so that's, we'll just take off what this is off of what we wanna do with the rest of the kind of route. So I think there's some bridge, there's some recreation stuff that we wanna do along with it, so. The estimate, engineer's estimate is one eighty-three. I mean, that's pretty high. I know Haskins kinda did that as a, basically a sub job. So it's kinda nice that Meadow Creek kinda came in there and was reasonable.
Cause yeah, there was such a big disparity, I was hoping that somebody wasn't.
That's why I wanted to look at the, that's why I like to see the engineering estimate, so see if, make sure we're in line. So if, I guess if you don't have a. I do not. If you don't have an issue with that, I'd make the recommendation to award the bid to Meadow Creek Contracting.
I would make a motion that we award the bid to Meadow Creek Contracting. The amount of one fifty-four, five sixty?
Second back.
Okay, a motion and a second. And the recommendation of the road foreman to go with Meadow Creek. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, being none? Yeah, so that'll leave you a little bit of money Jared for those other ideas you had on.
No, it's good. It's good to have some competition.
Yeah. Yeah.
Otherwise it'd be like, mm, Haskins, I don't, let's talk about this. Cause we might have that kinda thing over in Sanders County as well.
There are not many.
Yeah, cause just not many people are bidding on anymore, I just still, I think they're just too busy.
You sign the bottom of that.
And also probably becoming kind of a lost trade or a lost art, not many people
That too.
Have equipment or do that stuff. They all wanna design video games or something.
And this is a stretched out project, right? This can be done, all clear out to next, next year, right?
Yep, this is one of those GAOA where it's like, oh, we can do it now, let's do it now. Instead of, you know, pile everything up in one year like we are with a little Joe and everything for next year, so. You want to keep that, I want your copy if you want. I got mine here. My gosh.
Let's go back to Casey. Let's go back to Casey.
Sorry to interrupt you.
Jason?
You did.
Let's go back to Casey.
Yeah, I can take it, I'll take.
You did.
Do you want these?
I do. I don't feel as good.
Okay, alright.
Do you need some capacity?
We're ten fifteen and we've got Northwestern Energy is here and gonna give us a little update on their planned work for the area, huh?
Yes, sir.
Uh-huh. Whoever wants to take it away, we're all ears.
Yeah, I'll go ahead here and start you in just a minute. Thanks for taking the time to listen to us today. I'm Gary Palmer, the division manager for Northwestern Energy in Missoula. So Kevin Connell is our town manager here, so he's kinda the face of Northwestern Energy and he's the person that ends up going out and responding to our system as well as building our system. And Steve Clausen, he's the one that arranged this meeting. And he's our community customer relations manager, is that close enough?
Yes, that's close enough.
Steve really, he arranged this meeting at my request. Here this year, we've had quite a bit of activity on our line this year due to weather. We've got quite a bit of work that we're doing on our line this year. And some of that work has unfortunately, you know, resulted in some outages also. And then we've also got a project starting on Monday where, you know, we may see some additional outages associated with that work that we're doing to upgrade our system. So with all of the activity that we've had and the weather and our upcoming work, we thought it would be beneficial, you know, to get in front of this group and kinda talk about what's occurred so far this year. The work that we're doing and some of the potential impacts, at least short term, for that work. So, you know, we'd like to just spend a few minutes with your kinda explaining our system. And then, you know, talking about the work that we've done as well as upcoming work and then answer any questions that you have. It's more informational so that, you know, if your constituents come to you and talk to you, at least you're aware of it. You know, we always want those, those people directed back to us if they have questions on reliability. So, you know, with that, I don't know if you have anything to add to.
No, I think this is gonna be a great conversation Gary, I'm glad you're here to go through it with everybody.
I'm not gonna inundate you with stuff, but I do believe a picture is worth a thousand words. And what I'd like to hand out to each of you here, just hand them around here. This is the only thing I'm gonna hand out and I'd like to talk to you about it. Oh, sure. Key to this conversation is, you know, understanding how we serve the communities within Mineral County. And I don't know how familiar you are with the transmission system on the electric that serves the substations, so. When you look at this, it's a Google Earth map that I printed. On the lower right is Missoula. And Waldorf, that's the old stone container.
Warner Waldorf.
Warner Waldorf, yep. So we've got a substation there. What you see is a yellow line that runs up and that's our transmission, our electric transmission line that serves pretty much all of Mineral County. And then the little, you know, dots are the individual substations. So one thing to point out is that our line, our hundred KV transmission line, whether it's Missoula Electric or it's Northwestern Energy, we serve all of those. So even if you're a Missoula Electric customer, that transmission service is coming from us and we're the operators of the transmission. So it kinda shows all the substations along here. So our transmission line pretty much runs along the valley and the interstate. You can see goes through Superior, St. Regis, and then it gets into the canyon up towards Howden, St. Regis. And at Taft, it departs from the interstate and it goes over Taft Summit and it drops down into Thompson Falls. And there we tie into our generation at Thompson Falls. And then at the Idaho border, we also have a link to a Vista system. So when you look at that, what we have is we have a, what we call a loop, which means we have a source from both sides. And, and that's really key to this conversation because normal operation, we've got over a hundred miles of line here and it's through some fairly heavily timbered country. It's hit with everything the weather can, can throw at it. And it's at different stages of its life from an asset standpoint. And normally, any problems that have occurred, because it's looped from both sides, we can quickly isolate a section and, and serve from both sides and nobody's out of power. So maybe real short outages in order for us to do some switching, but under normal operation, day after day, we have events on our system and our customers don't, many times don't even know it, where it's a real short outage because we're able to sectionalize and serve that from both directions. So that, that loop system is, is key here and it's really a very, very good from a reliability standpoint because we do have two sources. So that's kinda the way that our system's laid out. The only other detail I'll point out, at Taft, you see there's a different color on one side than the other. There are two different voltages. The yellow is hundred KV and the, and the orange on the Thompson Falls side is one fifteen KV. And it changes at our substation at Taft. Any questions on kinda the, the general layout of how we serve the communities, you know, within Mineral County? Getting into some of the items, you know, we've, we've had a fairly active year. If you remember back in January, it started off right in January. And right in the middle of January, we had a, it was really a regional wide windstorm that was almost unprecedented. I don't know if you go to Spokane very often, but through that area just west of, you know, in, west of, I guess it would be Wallace in there. I mean, you see all the trees snapped off, I mean, all along there. Well, it started over there, but it, it, it hit this area real hard and then, you know, it hit our Thompson Falls area real hard. So we spent about four days cleaning up and responding to that outage. And it, it affected customers, you know, within, within Mineral County. So that was a big event that kinda started off the year. In February, we had another one where we had some real heavy snow up at Taft. So we lost, we lost a section up, up on the top of the pass. And coincidentally, at the same time, we also had a problem down at Alberton. So now our loop, everything is, it all falls apart. We don't have a source from the west or the east. And we had, we had a multi-hour outage for, you know, most of the communities within Mineral County. Again, they were coincidental, but, you know, when you have two problems occur at one time, you know, the people in between end up, end up being out till we can fix it. We've got people responding right away, but it's still an impact on communities. So those were, were two items that were kinda weather related. And then here lately, I'd like to kinda step into some of the work. We're doing substantial amount of work at our, on all our facilities throughout Mineral County. We've got mostly it's system upgrades within our substations. So we did a hundred thousand dollar upgrade at, at Superior here. We just got done with a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar upgrade at St. Regis. And we've got another one coming up, that's about a one point two million dollar project up at our Taft substation. And, and two of the outages we've had recently in St. Regis, when we did our work at St. Regis, we have to de-energize our substation that serves the community. So we bring in a portable substation to set up to be able to, to serve that community. Unfortunately, when, where we had to set it up, it was in a line segment that we had a couple outages. So normally, if it were served off the substation, nobody would see an outage there at St. Regis. But since we had a portable in there and it was, it was set up where we could set it up, when we had two, two problems on our line, that portable substation went out of power. Now Kevin both times found the problem right away. We were able to restore them in fairly short order, but it's definitely a longer time than if we would've been normal. You know, it's one of those things that in order to build something, sometimes you have to tear it apart. And when you tear it apart, you don't have use of it until you, you build it back again. So the two outages that we, we had here recently that affected St. Regis were specifically due to, you know, the, the work that we're, we're putting into our system. And when we do that, we take a little bit of a reliability here to do it. And, and that, you know, gets us into the, the upcoming work that, that we're gonna be putting ourselves in kinda that same scenario again for an extended amount of time. We've got a one point two million dollar project and we're pretty much rebuilding our entire substation at Taft. It needs upgrading, it's, it's, it's gonna provide a lot of, it's, it's basically gonna extend the, you know, the life of the facility for the foreseeable future. And we're doing some upgrades there. But when we do that, the only way we can do it is take that entire substation out of service. So I talked about this loop that we have. Starting on Monday at Taft, we have to break that loop, we're not gonna have it anymore. So all of Mineral County will be, be fed from Missoula and we don't have the source from Thompson Falls.
Where does the power, where's the power coming from Waldorf or Missoula? Where, where's its source? I mean, I understand the west end with Thompson Falls and Vista, where's the electricity coming from?
It, basically when you get into Missoula, you get into, we've got a mesh. It's, it's, it's kind of a hub where we have multiple transmission lines. We have transmission lines that come from the east, from the Butte area. We also have the transmission lines that come down from Cur Generation, you know, to feed into Missoula. So Missoula's kind of a hub, that's all just interconnected to each other. But then when you hit Waldorf and you head west, we just don't have that redundancy. You know, it's one line that feeds up through this valley. So once you hit Waldorf, it's, it's multiple lines that, that come in.
But there's plenty of source of power coming from the Missoula.
Yeah, there's, there's no problems with capacity. But the risk that we have is we have ninety miles of line now. And if something happens, anything past that point.
Without a loop, everybody's.
Everybody's gonna be out. And, and we've recognized this, we knew that we've, we've got this project to do. It's the only way we can do the project. So some of the things that, that we've done, every year we do a, we do an aerial patrol on all our transmission lines. We identify problems and we fix those problems. But one of the additional things that we did, knowing that we were going to, to be on a radio line for a period of time, we did a complete structure by structure patrol, all the way from Missoula up to Taft. And Kevin was, you know, very much part of, of looking at that. We get our trained people out to identify things that we don't feel might, they, they might break, you know, during this time period. And we spent about sixty-eight to seventy thousand dollars repairing those items. And then, you know, we've, we've also got a fairly aggressive tree trimming plan this year on that line segment. It's not due directly to our Taft project, but we're spending about five hundred and twenty-five thousand just in our general tree clearing and, and right away maintenance. So we think we've done what we can do to kinda shore this up, but we're still at risk.
So Gary, how long will you think, speaking of the risk, when you shut down Taft for this upgrade, what's the timeframe anticipated to be shut down?
The timeframe is, is starting on Monday through, we're anticipating right now through about August 12th. So it's gonna go all the way through July, you know, into August. We've, we, we know that we wanna make it as short as we can. So we've extended our working hours on the crew that's, that's working up there. But, but we've, we've hit the point where we really can't do it any faster. And, and we don't have any way really of mitigating it beyond what we've already done. And, and there's a chance that we're gonna, we're gonna have some more activity.
What, you were talking about a portable substation. So there's no way, no possibility that a portable substation can be at Taft to help continue the loop while the main substation's torn down?
We can. We do have a portable up at Taft, but it's to serve the distribution that's out of Taft. But the transformer that transforms the one fifteen to hundred KV, that's the piece of equipment that we have to remove from service. And it's not just a transformer you set on a pad, there's a whole bunch of electronics that go into it. That, it's, it's a, it's a complete package to run it. And all of that is being redone. So no, we don't, once we take that, it's called our auto transformer, once we take it out of service, we, we don't have the ability to, to quickly put it back in. Now, we have automation on the line, there's many switches along this line that are operated remotely from our Butte control, our transmission control office. So they can, they can see where faults are at and they can remotely open and close switches. We have relays within our substations that give us good fault distances, you know, when something does occur. So we've got a lot of tools to help Kevin if something happens here. We've got a lot of tools to be able to point him where the problem's at. And we have, you know, people that can quickly respond from Missoula. But it's, it's, it's not, it's gonna be less reliable than when we're completely rebuilt. It's, it is kinda what it is at this point. We, we, we know we're in a, a little bit more of a precarious position from an operations standpoint. Our management's aware of it, we've got people to be able to respond. We will probably respond a little bit differently than maybe we would when it's all intact. But it takes time to get people from Missoula up to here. It takes time to find the problems. And where before we could probably switch those problems out and serve everybody, you know, those people would be out until we fix them. So that's what we kinda wanted to get in front of this group in case, you know, your constituents come to you and we have problems.
We're just gonna send in the hammer.
I get enough of that.
With this, you say you, you represent the west side?
Yeah.
So, you know, they're more probably at, at risk than, that would be Howden and Salties. Cause once you, from St. Regis up, well, you've driven along that interstate. Very tree, narrow rightaways. It tends to be the area that we have the most problems. And so they're probably more at risk to have an extended outage than, than, than our substations going, going east. And I don't know if you have anything to add, Steve?
No, not to your presentation, that was great, great.
But you need other questions?
The Forest Service always gives, sends me a text when they're gonna burn and so then I post it on the Mineral County Facebook page, kinda give people the hands up that, you know, there's, if you see smoke, it's the Forest Service burning. Is there a way that, say if the power's gonna be out in a certain area, you could send me a text to say, hey, tomorrow we're gonna, the power's gonna be out in this area from such and such to such and such, and then that kinda saves people calling you guys or calling the sheriff's eye, our power's out?
We don't have any planned outages.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we don't, we're not gonna plan anything during this.
He's just saying there's a potential for a windstorm.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Blow the top of the tree out or something.
Okay.
And then, you know, we post on social media, we have an outage website that we have. And, and so, you know, when they do occur, we have, we have communication channels that we use to kinda update people on, on the status of the outage and, and our estimated restorations.
Oh, you could put on there, you know, from June to August 12th.
Yeah.
There will, there will only be one source coming from Missoula if, so expect the possibility of outage if there's a tremendous storm, cause there's not that backup loop to backfill it. Something like that, right?
And if anybody asks you, there is a, a website.
Oh, okay.
Through NorthwesternEnergy.com and it'll give you an outage website. And the, the nice thing what it'll do is it'll give you an estimated repair time. So let's say I go out and I find the problem and, and I think that, I have to report to, to the distribution control or, or transmission and I tell them, I'm estimating this is gonna take three hours to fix. Okay, so then they post that to this site and, and it, it's not always exact accurate, but it gives you some sort of idea is, oh, this is gonna be ten hours or this is gonna be, shouldn't be here real soon.
No, if you need to take the meat out of the freezer or not.
Right, right, right. So that's a helpful tool to our customers.
On the tree removal, you said you're gonna put in quite a bit of money into that this year. We've had questions in the past, when some of that tree removal is done, the Forest Services said, well, who gave them permission to do that? They didn't have a permit or, so do you need, do you do a permit or do you have right of way through on that or how's that work?
We have a permit with the Forest Service and we work very closely.
And maybe, maybe they weren't aware of it, remember when Carol said that? Well, one I'm talking to was the last swath up through Camel's Hump, when they took some of that out and.
Was that on the transmission?
No, that was on the distribution.
That was on the distribution.
That's when they did the hazard tree project two winters ago, I believe.
And they're probably not questioning maybe your right to on the right of way, but I think what they were concerned with is whoever the sawyers were, were just blocking up willy-nilly different, some nice beautiful trees for hazard reduction. And then the, the Forest Service couldn't do anything with it because there's certain lengths that they can take to the mill or post and pole or use. And if one's seven foot and next one's fifteen and one's six, you know, they, 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 I don't know if they've ever talked to you guys, but they kinda like it to be what they want consistent, where they can actually load it up and get some merchantable timber out of it instead of just letting it sit in a ditch.
There is a lot of up there that is laying there. Yeah, I mean, I, I will agree that it's, it's, it's a shame that someone wasn't put to use.
Probably it's education of whoever doing the blocking up of the trees.
And if it was up to me, I'd say cut them all.
I'm not necessarily disagreeing.
But he worked in a sawmill.
Everything that can fall into our minds, not all of the trees, but we would like to.
But yeah, yeah, it'd be, it'd be nice just to have to do it one time, wouldn't it? I mean, like along the big power line, you know?
It would, but that's not the world that we're in.
I know, I know. I know all too well.
And, and going forward in the future, that, you know, with all the stuff that's happened in California and stuff, I, I can see a change coming in the next ten years with, you know, the Forest Service and, and they're really the ones that have the final say in, in those right of ways. And, and so what do we do, you know, to mitigate our, our fire risk?
So. We've developed a good relationship with them.
Yeah, oh, I know, I didn't, I didn't mean it that way.
I, I know you did.
It did come up in a meeting and, you know, I don't know who gave them permission to cut that or how they cut it or whatever, you know, and that was a couple of years ago, but it, they were, the person we were talking to was unaware of any permit or.
And it was a nice big tree, a fir or something, and it wasn't the right length of doing. I think that was kinda mainly the complaint was, the wood could've been used.
So on that, they have a, they have a guy go through, it's called a permitter. And so the guys out there that are cutting, aren't just cutting willy-nilly. It's, it, they have a arborist to go through and they identify, it's either gotta be split tops, sprung root, diseased. Not, not even necessarily a leaner, because if a leaner's a healthy tree, it grew up leaning. And so not all the time you'll, you'll see, why didn't they take that? And so not all the time you'll, you'll see, why didn't they take that one?
Yeah, I wondered that when I drive up there and look at that. Well, they cut that one, why didn't they cut that one?
And they're looking at it and they're, they're looking at every tree. And, and so they're, they're really ultimately the ones that are saying, hey, this one needs to go. And then that's why somebody might, you and I might look at it and go, well, I thought that's a healthy tree. But he's maybe looking at the root ball and maybe he's looking at the top, you know, split top.
They are arborists who made it big out. So then what, I'm kind of interested in Gary and the, because a lot of people, like me included, used to think, oh, Mizzou Electric Co-op is, you know, standalone. But, you know, I have come to learn that you guys share some lines or, you know, you, you know, share and then jump off and then share again. But basically, if, if someone's fed from the Tarkio, Mizzou Electric Co-op station back to SEER or what have you, their power really is coming from Northwestern Energy all the time. So, so how, how come sometimes someone will have an outage in Alberton on? Oh, I, now you, now I'm just thinking out loud. Alberton can be out, but people can still have their power on their co-op because what, they're getting?
Because of the loop.
From the loop.
And, and, and we're able to sectionalize that and just, just take one section.
Okay. So it's not the difference in companies, it's where the outage might be occurring.
It's where it's at on the line.
Gotcha.
So when you're done with all these upgrades, will we be hack proof?
We'd like to be.
I hope so.
Whenever you have to.
The president gave them a lift and said, these are off limits. So we're hoping the power companies will, will, will.
We'll see. And I, I don't know what the future holds for them. You know, when, 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 when I talk about our, our system and our ability to, to remotely operate it from, from our Bute Control Center, you know, that, that Bute Control Center, I can't even walk in there. I, I, I can't get in the building. It's, it's, it's completely access control, you know, both physically as well as from a network standpoint. And, and we take that extremely seriously as utilities.
So I don't know if that's where, where his question was coming from, but is that kind of what's spurring on this upgrade? Is to try to make it a little more hack proof computer wise?
Some of it is, is just our, you know, equipment. We have, have more updated equipment, you know, to run the system. At Taft, we are installing a, a circuit breaker. So it'd be like a breaker in your house, only much, much bigger. That will give us one more spot to, to control our system that we don't have today. So it, it's not just, you know, refurbishing it. We, we are actually improving the system with a breaker addition at Taft.
Is this, is this Taft substation also fed a little bit from power that comes off of the big line, the big?
VPA.
VPA line that you?
Not really. That's a, but that's, that's the Taft 500 KV sub. The, the connection between that 500 KV and the rest of our system, there's only a few spots that we tie into that. So yes, it is tied into it, but not directly.
In fact, we, we serve power to that substation.
Oh, alright.
Yeah, yeah.
Who else are they talking to?
All of the salary board people.
Oh.
I guess I should go tell them it's loaded in here.
Oh, that's pretty interesting.
Yeah, you can keep those. We, we appreciate it if you don't just share that with others. Although it's not secret information, you know, it, it is locations on the transmission grid that, you know, you could go through Google Earth and find all of them if you zoom in on it. But it, it's something that we really just wanted to hand out to you to, to use.
Say you don't want to help anybody else.
But we don't, we don't, we would rather not, not help people.
Well, good. Well, yeah, thanks for the keeping us surprised. Once in a while we do get called. And like Gloria said, maybe she can put it on the website so people have a heads up that they could expect something like that.
So when is it? From June?
It's starting June on Monday, so it'll, it'll be the 21st. And we're expecting right now to have, have it back in service on the 12th of August.
And that's a pretty aggressive schedule. It really is aggressive, so.
So you're saying it could go a little longer possibly?
By the first August, I'm sure we'll probably know whether we're gonna get it in the next couple of weeks or whether we're gonna get delayed. You know, we have such a short window to work up there.
Yeah, that'd be snowing by the first August.
Well, you, you started out, you started out Gary, saying thank you for letting you come and talk. And we just want to say thank you for being willing to come and pay the fees. Very nice, appreciate it.
If we have a couple more minutes, there is something that I want to make you aware of. Cause it's, it's gonna affect Meadow County. We've already started some of the work. But I, I'm just gonna leave some information with you and you can reach out to me based on your time today. We are doing an automated meter upgrade all over Montana. And we've already started in Mizzou. And we actually, I can leave you a couple extra pieces as well.
Thank you.
It's got my business card in the back and I am the person that, to be contacted if you get an inquiry from someone. It's a new meter that communicates two ways, back and forth to our, our control center so that we can monitor.
Hey Mike, it hasn't started yet. Her last meeting hasn't been ended.
Get the data without having to drive trucks around.
You wanna just head on?
And it allows us to, to do a lot of things that we're not capable of doing right now. And this is all in here. Explains really why we're doing it.
My pen's on it.
It's got my card on there because if you get a question, then we, I, we put out some, some postcards yesterday, cause we're gonna do some work in two weeks in Alberton. And it goes to the homeowner and then the homeowner can contact me if they have a question. And then our people will come out. The outage, the meter change takes a few minutes. We knock on the door, tell the customer we're there, complete the work and leave. If they're not there, we leave a door hanger and ask them to give us a call. So we can set a time to come back when they're available. So we've, I want you to know about it, cause when somebody shows up, there are people that don't necessarily look at some of the stuff we mail out all the time. But if they call one of you, you'll know exactly what it is and you can refer them directly to me.
Okay.
Okay?
Tell them to go down and buy some windows from you.
Do we have a timeframe on when that's gonna start out here?
It's started in Mizzou. We've, we've done, we started doing some work down in the Bitterroot. The Alberton stuff went out, like I said, yesterday. And I'm getting kind of weekly updates as to, you know, kind of where the, where they're sending out information to customers. And so I'm gonna stop at Alberton on the way back and leave a little material there, but.
Yeah, and the, the little grocery store there has a bulletin board. Maybe if you just pin it up there, people go in and out, they might read that.
I'll do that.
Sometimes they see that more, they don't read the post office as much as they do that.
That's a great idea.
Just ask the clerk, go, okay, and put it up there.
Yeah. But I'm the guy.
Yeah.
Alright.
Alright, you got your number.
Yeah.
Yeah, don't call me.
Yeah, he's gonna call me, so.
I think I have your number blocked.
I appreciate the time too. This was not on the agenda, but I really wanted to give you all a heads up too, so.
Alright, and best of luck to you guys on your project. Hopefully everything goes by, goes off without a hitch. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
10:45 Salary Compensation Board Meeting and we've got, the sheriff is on the phone. He called in to be in on this. And we've got our three members of the public, Mr. Jasper, Julie Stang and Diane McGowan. Elected official county attorney Ellen and Jamie Calvert and Calanne. And JP McGowan is here. Alright, so we're here to discuss what, what the board recommends and thinks we should do this year for elected officials and where they're at with their pay. So I guess the COLA rate for the year out of MAKO is a 1.2% recommendation. But of course the Salary Compensation Board can go higher, lower. That's what this discussion's about today, so. Let's see, Calanne, you wanna start with what you know about?
Oh, I just, I provided everybody with spreadsheets with a different percentage rate on the left-hand side. And then on the right-hand side, it shows the hourly increase. And this is on the base salary of the elected officials. They're all uniform. I did a 2%, 2.5, 2.75 and 3%.
And do we know what MAKO is suggesting or not?
1.2.
Oh, 1.2 is what they, is the total. Okay, that's what they suggested.
Okay, that's just the COLA, you didn't include, was the longevity for elected or?
I did not include the longevity. The long, the prior longevity is on the spreadsheet, but nothing new. I didn't calculate anything new.
So do we know how this compares with other counties that are similar to us? As far as what, what they're recommending or what they're doing?
I've been getting lots of emails. A lot of it's the 2.5 to 3% and I think Jamie has seen the same thing. It's kind of all across the board.
So like a small county like, well, Sanders is twice as big as us, I guess, but maybe Granite, I mean, similar?
Yeah, we would have to ask them. I really don't know.
So what about, I'd like to hear what elected officials feel about their wage that they're getting and their workload. It just seems like everything's kind of been up this year to everybody. I know my, my profession is and I know it's caused stuff at the treasure. Her office, I know, has been.
Yeah.
Cause I know they're getting recordings and...
Yeah, workload's definitely increased.
What about, are you gonna be budgeting for more employees or just paying your people more? What are you, what are you thinking? Just curious.
I'm waiting for the mail to come out. Wait for the mails to come out.
Oh, okay.
And when is that, August?
I'm just wondering, are people like behind because they can't keep up or?
The one office that is experiencing that is the plant, land planner. And so we have initiated.
Of course, that office.
Job applications for a, of course, one employee is currently out because of the tragedy with the house. And so another application was to bolster that and get another person in there to help. And so it'd be Andy and two people helping him. But that's the only discussed additional employee, I'm on additional employees to the county roster.
Okay. Is that a full-time position?
Yeah.
Until, I, I mean, I, I plan on asking for help in the upcoming fiscal year, additional help. But as of now, in this fiscal year now, but starting July 1, we're, we're drowning up there. Have been for years too.
What about the sheriff's office?
Well, that's a whole nother beast. And I was just gonna, I was gonna wait my turn before I talked. I didn't know. Well, you know, I mean, I've talked to Ellen and, and the law, thank God, has changed. So, I mean, I can get into some stuff and, and mind you, this is the first time I've ever done a meeting like this. So I don't know if I'm even, what I'm supposed to bring up and not bring up in this meeting, but my concerns. But, I mean, I know, I, I don't know if everybody else wants to go first, cause I don't want to just blab on and waste everybody's time.
Hey Mike, right now, the, one of the board members just asked a question. How many of the elected officials are we aware of that want to add an employee to their department? So I told her that the planning, land planner was asking for one. Ellen spoke up and said she plans on asking for an additional employee and Calanne did too. So then she asked, how about the sheriff? Are you planning on adding employees to your current roster?
Well, obviously we'd love to add more deputies, but that's a big expense, more than just like those other employees you're talking about. So I think that would come down to, you know, I've gotten a lot of feedback from people in the community and, and within the board of doing a public safety mill levy. Of course, we've got an election coming up this year and I have no idea if somebody's gonna run against me or not. So I can't really focus on both at that time to get, to hopefully pass it. I would think, and I don't know if a public safety mill levy will pay for employees or not. I don't even know how they work. I mean, I need to get educated on it. But clearly we, our call volume has jumped. And with all these new, as probably Judy Stang can say, as all these new subdivisions are coming in and everything's selling, there's gonna be, you know, we're getting increased. And there is no Forest Service Ranger anymore. So now we're being pulled up into the forest to do SEFs and everything else and it's just stretching us thin. And then we got the highway patrol, who they're only down to like two guys in the whole county. And we're taking calls for them. We try to limit it as best we can, but you know, public safety's the number one, so. But, so yeah, could we use one to two more deputies? Yes, most definitely.
And aside from?
We did get the extra jailer. You did give us an extra jailer, which is helping, which isn't training. And dispatches, I think, I think we're good in dispatches as long as nobody leaves. I think we're good. It's just the deputies, you know, of course we'd like another one or two. But, you know, we're at eight now, which is what it was in 99 when I was here. And, you know, so.
And the reason I ask is like, it all comes to the bottom line. I mean, if you have more employees, sometimes you can't afford to give raises. So it's like, what's more important, like more help or?
Yeah, I mean, it's.
Yeah, so.
And, and I've told the deputies that. I mean, the deputies have complained that they would like other officers. And I said, well, do you want a raise or you want another officer?
What do they say?
What do you want?
What do they say?
They just didn't, they want both. That's what they say, you know? But of course it's not them. They, you know, it's not, they, they don't have to come in front of you guys like I do. And, you know, they're just taking calls.
Is the jail bringing in non-tax revenue now to cover the cost of employees?
So, you know, the, you know, we did get the jail open, which, you know, I was able to do. And we're, we're bringing in, not that that's supposed to be a moneymaker for us by no means, but it is making, we have gotten just over 30 grand so far since it's been open. And we're, the state still owes us two months of pay. So that's another 16,000 probably coming to us on top of that 30 grand. And then like I've told them in other meetings, we're doing a contract, we're, we're in the process of negotiating with the marshals for 10 beds and that'll bring us, that'll bring a substantial amount of money into the county, into the sheriff's office for the jail. If that happens, which we're hoping to hear soon. I know, I just called the guy this morning, cause I was hoping to be able to talk more positive about it. But he's just waiting on DC, you know, cause everybody in the whole country's now scrambling for beds in the marshals, so. But he's hoping that we hear back soon, that they can go forward with the 10-bed deal with us.
So Mike, this is Diane McGowan. Would that be 10 beds paid consistently and held open?
No, no, just when they're here. But they probably will have 10 in here consistently, but no, just when they're here. They just want to be, they just said, how many beds can I give them? I said 10. Now, they, part of the contract negotiation was that they would also give us extra money possibly to update our camera systems and some other systems within the department. That's why we've held off on spending some of the Affordable Pairs Act money that I still have sitting there. Because if they're gonna pay for it, then we can use that money for other stuff like radios and that. But, so we're just waiting on them to come to me and, and make the offer to me what they're... And then of course I'd take, have to take it to the commissioners and all that. But we're just waiting to see what they say. It sounds positive, but you know, until it happens, you never know.
And the feds pay more for the beds, right, than the state?
Yeah, they'll pay $89 a day. State only pays like 63. So I already told them that, you know, I said, I want it $89 a day and they said, no problem. And, you know, so. And if you have 10 beds and they're full, $89 a day, times that by 30, times that by 12, that's a lot of money coming in.
And another problem, Judy, is we can't get applicants for employees.
Because of the pay.
Well, yeah, because of the pay, you know, if we're starting them at $10 an hour, nobody wants to come to work for $10 an hour. So do we now up the starting? What do we start, start them at? And then if we start them at $12 an hour, you've got employees who's been working here for two or three years that aren't even making that, so then do we jump them up higher? So it's just kind of, what do we do?
Are they, is it $15?
And then the county better.
No, I'm talking about me.
Oh.
The other thing the county needs to start bracing itself for is if Sleepy Joe has his way, if the Democrats have their way, the minimum wage is gonna be $15 an hour soon. And then what are we gonna do? Now you've got everybody not make whatever in the courthouse not making $15 that are gonna jump up to $15. Then you've got dispatchers and jailers that are making $15, that they're not gonna do that job for minimum wage. But yet you can't raise them up because the deputies are maxed out at 19. So unless you raise me up to raise the deputies up, to raise the jailers and dispatchers, I mean, it's a catch 22. I don't know what, but that minimum wage is coming sooner or later.
Well, and that'll be incrementally, won't it? Over a period. It'll be over a period of time, like four years, won't it?
The $15 an hour?
Yeah, I think it's. I don't know.
I thought they were talking about just making it happen. I mean, however they raised it before.
So are you guys looking at? So when you start work here, you only get $10?
Well, it depends on experience.
She's on your 975.
You know, I mean, if it's just an entry-level clerk position.
I have another.
And that's what I'm, you know, I mean.
I mean.
Where, where do we start?
Yeah.
I mean, do we, okay, we bump up the starting wage to $12 an hour, well, then you've got employees that are only making 10 something or 11 something that's been here two or three years. So then do you then bump them up to 13? I mean.
You could give them longevity increases, I guess.
You know, so.
Well, I think you do, I think you do what you did with the jail and the dispatchers. If somebody now has been here a couple of years and they're only making $11 an hour, but you bump it up to 12, everybody goes to 12, it's still a raise for them. You know, they're still getting a raise.
Yeah, but you've got somebody coming in that, that hasn't been working here, and, and they're making 12. Well, it's not fair to the employee that had to start at 10, work their way up to 12 for two or three years.
I had to do that with my dispatchers and jailers.
So do you then give them, start, give them up to 13? So where are we coming up with the money? I mean, you know, that's, that's the big thing.
I really think what you're gonna have to do, and, you know, I notice it in our businesses, is that food costs aren't rising as fast as wage costs, but I think you're just, to be competitive, you're gonna have to revisit this probably twice a year or even three times a year, cause that's how fast, I mean, just look, Quin's is offering $500 bonuses for sign-on bonus. I mean, every place that you go, they have help wanted signs regardless of the energies or industry. So I think it's just something that you're gonna have to focus on it, and every quarter, make yourself competitive and see where the market's at and adjust accordingly, cause, you know, you're in the same boat as we are. You're just, there's not that many boats out there, and the ones that are there are gonna get hired quickly, so.
Well, that's really a good point.
Yeah, but we can't do it quarterly because we're on a yearly budget, so, I mean, we've got a.
Yeah, I don't know how you plan for a yearly, though, at this point with those wages. I, I mean, I've just seen it skyrocket in, from the first of the year to even June. I, I don't know how, I don't, I don't think you can put together a good plan for a year, because I don't know where you're gonna be December 31st, I really don't, you know?
You're gonna have a crystal ball.
Yeah.
So are the taxes, the taxes are going up, I know that, because we just got our tax thing. But are there, with all the new building, is that gonna affect, um, the tax revenue quite a bit? Do you have any idea about that?
Does it take a couple of years, cause they're a little bit behind?
Are they doing reappraisals this year?
Yeah.
We just got ours, it went up a couple of hundred.
But I think it was based on January 1st numbers.
Yeah, it was, yeah.
We, we expect it, but we don't control that, the state department revenue.
No, I know, no, I know.
That's been our main complaint, is that the state department revenue has been way behind on catching up. So we've been wondering when we're gonna start to see this increase.
Because they don't catch the new building.
And that, yeah, they're, they're just so far behind it, we're going, hey, we have way more new buildings than that, we only got this much more.
And we don't even have anybody on the ground here in Mineral County now, do we?
No.
How far behind are they, the state?
I just got one, they hadn't, they hadn't updated for four years. I go, really?
Oh, no.
Because it's not, yeah.
Cause I was thinking this would be, it's just incredible where I am.
I even, C.C. definitely, I go, come on, guys, this is bad. Get some more people. Whatever, I guess.
They have people in Thompson Falls running our assessments down.
Since Polly retired. Also, are we, is the county contracting with Jessica anymore?
Yeah, annually for the budget time.
And has that changed any? It's gotten small, less.
Oh, yeah, she's hardly ever here, except for a budget time.
Well, it looks like you got a lot of things to look at, like wage increases for the people that aren't elected, plus it looks like you have a lot of cash reserves. I don't know, the public safety's 300 in the hole, and I'm guessing you're taking that out of pill. But are you getting, uh, pilt this year, or do they cut that out, or what?
No, I think we're still getting.
Yeah, we're supposed to get it this year. Yeah, they tell us year to year.
I'm gonna guess that's, that's what the plan was with that.
Usually is.
Do you know how much that is?
500.
I had, I had taken a picture of, over the years, what the pilt was, but it's so small. It goes back to 19 and it just shows all.
Well, it used to be 10 cents an acre, and then it went to, yeah.
Yeah, we got a good increase, Mineral did. Let's see, 19, it was 250, 250,000. Then June of 20, it was 338. Nice. So it was an increase of 35%. Then in, yeah, let me see here, sorry. I'm just trying to see the whole, it's from the mtcounties.org. What does it let, oh, now I lost it, I just took a picture of it a couple of days ago. Because somebody else was just asking me about pilt, and so I wanted to go and look. You know, 250, then 3. Yeah, then.
So Judy, I'm sorry, Judy, while she's doing that, um, is the county, well, Kellen also, is the county, um, showing a deficit right now? Waiting on the pilt money?
No, just this one fund is, so it means you have to take it out of some other fund at zero, at the end of.
It's always been, that's.
But that's how I think they do it that way.
So the pilt money will be kind of an additional income, and then that goes into the, does that still go into the rainy day fund or whatever, if there's extra?
Pilt money you can spend anywhere. It's the one.
That's the one you can move around.
The other money you can only put in the road.
And there's another, then 19 to 20, 600 and some odd thousand, it was a change of like 40, $41 or something. Those are the two from Mineral County.
And then the other one's, that's, that's RS?
Secure Road Schools.
Do we get that too, or do we?
Yeah, and that's earmarked only for roads.
Yeah.
And schools, I think. Roads and schools.
Yeah.
You know, and this is just, here, here's what I would do if I were you guys, and I don't know if you can afford it or not, but I would almost go with the 3% raise that Kellen has presented, just for the fact, like on a salary like that, you're talking with their cost of living adjustment, if I did it right, and the increase to the base would be $3,000. That's a dollar fifty an hour. Basically, to keep pace, I don't even know if you can keep pace at that level, but at least it gives you a fighting chance. But I qualify that with, I don't know if you guys can afford it, cause I don't, I don't, I see you have pretty good reserves, but I know it's taken you a long time to get there.
Right, we were.
Exactly, so.
Didn't have anything.
And I don't know how much cushion you have, I'm just telling you what's out there and what I see to be, to stay competitive, or at least hold your own, I think you gotta be somewhere in there, and that's just what I see, so.
Oh, another question I have is, um, has Justice Court brought in additional, quite a, quite a few revenues, additional revenues? Justice Court, have you seen an increase in your bringing in money?
Well, not right now because of COVID and everything. There was like, uh, law enforcement, I guess, cut back, highway patrol, so we weren't getting as many fines. Plus people were unemployed and trying to get them to pay their fines, so it just dropped some. Hopefully next year that'll change.
Well, it's kind of increasing the last month or two, isn't it?
Yeah.
So is that right, Kellen, with the 3% hourly increases of 65 cents?
Yeah.
Well, I'd make a motion to, cause it's just a recommendation, to go with the 3%. Basically, just because it's competitive and it will have, I, I think your elected officials have to make enough where you can offer your other help, cause if you start paying them more than elected officials, I know you have like a kind of a dogfight, like, you know what I mean? Like your, your clerk people and stuff, and your deputies, so.
Can I add something before we vote?
Yeah.
So 3% is great. The law changed for the sheriff's office is now pulled away from the elected officials, which means I can get a higher increase of that percentage than the other elected officials. Because throughout the state, all the sheriff's offices, including Mineral County, it's been held back, our wages, and therefore affects the deputy's wages and everything else. And we work 24 hours a day, seven days a week, holidays. We deal with homicides, like the child one we dealt with this year. And, uh, you know, we've got, I can go on and on about our job and what we do, and I think most of you know it, like I know Judy knows what the sheriff's office does, and what we have to put up with, and, and I think this last year, we've turned it around a lot. We've, uh, increased our visibility and, and been answering calls, and I think we've got a good crew of deputies. And, um, I agree that the elected officials, I think the 3%, I agree with that. I'd like to add either at least 1% above or 2% above for the sheriff's salary. So either 5% increase or 4%. But we've gotta start getting up there because we're gonna have to do something to get, uh, you know, what we deal with every day, and that's just my point, you guys do what you want, but that's, I just wanted to throw that out there. And the law has now changed so that we can do that, but that wouldn't take effect until October 1st.
Do you understand that, Ellen, that new law very well?
Uh, I do, I didn't realize it was October 1st, though. And actually, I, I thought I had printed it up, the, um, the bill, and it actually is, because, yeah, I printed it up. I, I was printing up on pink paper, cause I was doing my minute entries, I switched to white paper, and then I left it sitting up there on my desk. But, uh, yes, as Sheriff Tuth was saying, that, you know, all the, um, department heads, with the exception of county attorney, I think just about every elected department head, all kind of was based on the same salary. Now, some get add-ons, uh, and so there's a little bit of difference there, there's some for longevity. So there's some different, there is, so not every department head's making the exact same, but they all kind of start with the same base, and then you have the add-ons for particular department heads. So the sheriff's, uh, salary would be the same as all the other department heads. Well, they had some legislators that went to the, uh, you know, they passed, they, it passed, saying, hey, wait a minute, which, as Sheriff Tuth was saying, I'm on call a lot as the sheriff's, as the sheriff. I work holidays, um, most other department heads don't, you know, some do get called on weekends or things, but for the most part, it's an eight-to-five job as a department head, except for, you know, the sheriff, the county attorney. Uh, and so they, it, it looks like the legisla, or well, the legislators did take that into consideration, say, you know what, we're not going to require that their salaries are the same as the other department heads, because we have to look at it. It is a completely different beast being, you know.
Is it just the sheriff, or is it just the deputies? Is it everybody?
It actually addresses, it initially starts as like the sheriff, where they say that, almost like Sheriff Tuth said, that we're not gonna tie his income into what all the other department heads make, cause that, that was it. And then the, um, under sheriff made a percentage of what the sheriff makes, the deputy makes a percentage of what. So they couldn't make more than the sheriff. Now, we do know that sometimes deputies with overtime, and even the under sheriff can get overtime. Uh, I don't know particularly the Mineral County, but we have, you know, we've seen it before, where the deputy or the under sheriff makes more than the sheriff, because they get overtime. So, and, and the sheriff doesn't, so, cause he's, you know, yeah.
What about the shift differential, do we get that here still?
And, and you know, and the other thing is, COVID is a prime example. When COVID hit and it was locked down, the sheriff's office couldn't be locked down. We had to come to work, and we had to go out and deal with people and handle people where other agencies could shut down and work from home, or, or just come into a closed courthouse, where we still dealt with the public and, um, still were out there. And then, of course, they'll tell you the battles I had with the health department and, and Ellen, you know, had to straighten, you know, we had to have some heart to hearts, and we always came to an agreement, but, um, but that's because we're always out there, and that's why I think, I know some of the other elected officials get mad about it, but the sheriff's office is a different beast. And I have 20 employees I have to manage, uh, six dispatchers, seven jailers, and six deputies, well, seven deputies with the under sheriff being one of them. And it's, it's hard work, and it's, and unlike other sheriffs in the past, you know, I think we've, I'm showing that I'm here, and I'm meeting with the commissioners all the time, and we're getting work done and trying to be a team player, so. Still, I'd like to consider that before you make your vote, that's all I wanna say, so.
So for Kenny or Diana, when, that, to help, the other, the other piece of this law that the legislature passed was to give the sheriff more money wasn't solely, I don't think it wasn't solely so the sheriff would make more money. Let's take this current proposal, 3% on that last page, and you see on the far right where Kellen has the 3% for elected officials end up being approximately an hourly rate of 65 cents an hour. So the state statute has it where we can give employees a raise. So typically what we do, if the elected officials are getting 65 cents, we would try to give all the employees the same amount to make it equal, rather than giving employees 3%, cause they might only make 25 cents more on the 3% instead of 6.
Right, gotcha.
But then if you look down the bottom of the page, so while the elected official is getting a 65 cent raise, the state statute, which we can control employees' pay with the exception of deputies, the state statute has them set out by percentage rate of the sheriff. So if the sheriff's getting a 65 cent raise, then you can see what the deputies, uh, where their hourly longevity, their hourly rate increases approximately, uh, anywhere from, what, 20 to 22 cents more? You know, it's based on.
Right now, our deputies are getting 90% of my base.
90%.
Is that right, Kellen?
Yeah. But they can go up now.
And that, now they can go up, but I'm not planning, that's not gonna happen, they'll stay at 90. I think the only one that's gonna automatically jump up is the under sheriff.
So the argument for the law was that if you give the sheriff a little more than the other elected officials, then, then those deputies don't just make 20 cents, they'll make more, like.
Yeah, so it's like a domino effect, so it's not just the sheriff that gets the increase, then there's that potential for all the others. So I mean, that would almost be something to.
Like, like Judy said, it all depends on what we can afford, but then the other piece of the problem is if the deputies are held statutorily down at just a percentage of what elected official makes, and right now, they're starting out at like, you know, 20, $20.53 an hour, then if we.
1978.
No, they're 19.
Oh, 1978.
1970.
1970.
Not even 20, that's the upsetting part.
Okay. So then we have the problem of the dispatchers and the detention officers. Now, if they need more money, like his example of, of, what if there is a minimum wage of 15? Okay, now we're gonna have to pay them more to keep them here, and now they're buttoned up against making what a deputy does who has a badge and goes out on the calls and gets shot at versus in the building on the radio. So it's a whole myriad of problems that are coming, like you said, out of this, yeah, Diane?
So, um, does the, and maybe Sheriff Mike can address this too. They have the opportunity to move up to become deputies?
Who are we talking about?
The jailers and the.
Anybody can apply for a deputy position.
But is it in-house, I mean, do they have the?
Whoever, yeah, they can apply in-house, just, but they'd have to have the qualifications.
Right, right, of course, yeah.
That's correct.
But why would they want to move up to deputy?
More money?
Well, no, none of us close, yeah.
Well, that's what I'm saying, yeah, that's what I'm saying, that's a kind of.
We don't want that to be the problem, where it's not more money, because that could potentially happen.
Or if that's the job you want to do.
Cause we can't give the deputies a 65 cent an hour raise like we can all the other employees, because they're tied to state statute, which is only a percentage of the sheriff, and the sheriff gets 65 cents an hour, but they're 90% of the sheriff, so that's not 65, that's 90% of 65, so.
So that part of the law is still the same.
So this new law that just passed is that while we're talking about elected officials, they're all equal, this new. This new law says there's one exception, the sheriff can be greater. That's why when you said 3%, the sheriff was suggesting 3% plus for him an additional 2%. I don't know if you heard him say that.
Right.
Because now the law says he can. So he's trying to see what the Salary Compensation Board thinks of that idea to suggest.
So it'd be 5% starting July 1, instead of waiting to.
For the sheriff.
Instead of waiting till October.
And all elected officials.
Sheriff, did you say, did you say that there was, you were at the Montana Sheriff's Association meeting?
Yeah, Wednesday.
Oh, Wednesday, okay. Do you happen to know, do you have an idea of like what sheriffs make? Or what's the annual average? Or almost like you were saying, Diane, of our size, or maybe even probably bigger than us, because we do know, even though you look at our population of 5,000, our crimes, our tickets are more like, I mean, we have, I always bring this up, but we have more felonies here in Mineral County than we do in Sanders County. And, oh, actually, one of my grandpeople is here, and she was stunned by how many crimes we have.
Unfortunately, we don't take in, our tax base isn't the same as ours.
Right, but I mean, in terms of, so we don't want to just look at how many people we have in the community to determine what a sheriff should make because of the number of calls, you know.
Well, we have lots of employees.
You can go to the Make-A-Web site, and there's a salary survey from prior year.
Yeah, I, yeah, so I was, yeah, just wondering if he, you know, had an idea of what, oh, great, because I have.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Kenny.
Does the sheriff's rate include the coroner's, too, that extra $6,000 or $7,000?
Yeah, where did you put that, Kellann?
It's right there.
But is it included in the, like, the deputies? Is it 90% of the total or is it just the 45, the base?
The deputies get 90% of my base pay.
Okay.
But they also get the.
Plus the 2,000.
Yeah, if they're.
Okay, but not the coroner's portion?
Well, yeah, no, but they're all coroners.
They get paid for corner calls.
Yeah, I think all the deputies are coroners.
They do get shift differential in.
If they, if they go on a corner call, they get $100 for doing that call. They get a bonus.
But I think he was just wondering if that, if that corner 5,000 is included, added to your base for their percentage.
It isn't.
It is not.
It's 6,700.
They get overtime and shift differential, which the sheriff doesn't get.
Okay.
Correct. Yeah, I, most of them are making more money than me with their overtime and all their shift differential and their cert pays and their, all that. There's a lot of them are making more than me. My take-home check is despicable compared to what theirs are. But it's the way it is. Now, I get the word Stone Garden, that's federal overtime money, and I do that on the weekends when I can. But, you know, unlike the other couple sheriffs, not all of them, but the last couple, I think I've shown this past year, I'm here a lot. I'm at the office a lot. Obviously, I'm out of town right now, so sorry about that. But normally, I'm there all the time, and I put in the hours and the time because I want to make it a better place. And I'm getting a lot, you know, we get along with everybody, and I think we've changed the image of the office. And I just think we're worth it, and, you know, and we want to be here for you and want to continue to do good work.
So just to clarify, if we were looking at this 3% for all the elected officials, except for the sheriff, it would start July 1st, and the sheriffs would be 5% starting July 1st?
No, we'd have to wait for October.
We would wait for the other 2% to October?
Yeah, I could probably get, I could probably get the 3% July 1st, but then.
Okay, that's what I want to know.
Next year would be October 1st.
Thank you.
Yeah, I didn't realize it was October.
Is what I would get. They just told me at the meeting, it takes effect October 1st. So that's why I'm assuming that that's October 1st when that would take effect.
Okay.
I know.
So, but I mean it.
I don't want to keep, add more things to convolute or confuse Judy's original motion, but we'll get back to that in a minute. But Kellann?
Yes.
What, so this 3% recommendation currently is 65 cents more an hour for folks like you, but there's nothing in longevity. So are you, what if, what if there was a lesser cola and then the longevity? Because don't you guys appreciate longevity?
Of course, we appreciate longevity.
So where is that going to figure in?
I didn't figure longevity in, because we didn't, we didn't figure it in last year or the year before. I think they stopped, I think you guys stopped doing longevity in like 16, to kind of save money.
Well, but then on that note, too, the law said the sheriff gets longevity every year.
You get longevity and the deputies do.
Yes, it's like 1% or something, yeah.
But the longevity that's on this is prior. So what was given to everybody before? There's no new longevity. I can figure in longevity if you want me to.
I just didn't know if that was a part of this, or everyone just happy to leave that out of it and just talk about the 3%.
Wouldn't that be reinstating the policy for longevity then, if it's been abandoned? Because I remember when we had all those problems, that's when it got abandoned.
There's no policy, it's up to the commissioners.
Oh, you could do it right now, or?
Well, in the past, they would give it, and then also in the past, they could freeze it if there was a wage freeze and it froze longevity, and that kind of tripped up some folks.
So is it considered still frozen? Is it considered still frozen then, for the rest of the employees?
My memory isn't what it was. What do you colleagues remember doing last year?
Last year? There was no longevity.
Haven't got it for several.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think.
All right, then we'll just forget I suggested that.
Well, I think that that's, kind of shows the importance of the public safety levy, because if we increase the, I mean, we're, the public safety is already $300,000 and some thousand in the hole, that we have to now come up with PILT money or whatever to cover that. What is it going to be if we do this next year? Is it going to be $600,000 or, you know, I mean, where are we going to have to cut in order to cover that increase?
Well, now, jail is getting, paying customers, hopefully, it won't be going up to $600,000.
Well, but.
Well, that's a different fund, though.
Yeah, that's detention is a different, it's public safety that's in the hole. Just detention's okay.
Oh, okay.
So I have another question. From what I understand, the sheriff's office does not have a union yet or is not, not connected with a union, is that true? Or is it? Do they?
No, they don't. And we have continued to extend all the prior benefits. We didn't jerk any of those things away from them.
Well, I was just curious, I mean, this is kind of irrelevant, I guess, to this discussion, but if.
But if there is a union, that will, so like you heard Sheriff Cox say that, under the new law, there's these percentages, and a deputy under the new law could go up to, is it 90 or 95, under the new law?
95. But, but the reason, but that.
Doesn't have to be so, though.
The, the heart of that new law, because right now, the law used to be they topped out at 90. Now, a deputy could theoretically top out 95. But the purpose of that 5% increase there was for like promotions for departments like, well, like we do have a sergeant now. But like if you had lieutenants and captains and that, that you could get them above what a deputy's making. That's why I said, there's no way, the deputies are going to stay at 90%. Now, we do have a sergeant, so maybe we could make him 91. And I mean, right now, we're giving him a cert pay, so he's happy with that. But if we pulled the cert pay from him and then just gave him an increase, whatever, but that's what that 5% is for, is for promotions, is what it was meant for. And they, and at the meeting, they warned us all, don't be jumping everybody up, because you're just going to piss off your commissioners and everybody else. That is supposed to be for promotions, like, you know, a lieutenant, a captain, stuff like that. So I tend to adhere to that, I agree with that, and I think 90% is just fine for them. But, you know.
So I guess my question, this is Diane again, related to unions. If the sheriff's office becomes represented by a union in the future, does the union have anything to do with the wages?
Yes.
Well, they can ask for, a union will come in negotiation and try to negotiate wages, yeah, but.
Especially if they get it to 95, they'll be pushing for 95 instead of the 90 that the sheriff's saying they should stay at.
But we don't have to worry about that, this go-around, because there's no union yet.
Right.
Okay.
Correct. There's rumblings of one coming, but as far as I know, it hasn't taken feet yet.
Thank you.
I mean, I'm all for, I think that public safety is probably the number one thing other than the health department, but, you know, where do you draw the, I mean, where do we take the money to cover for that? You know, when we're already 300 and some, you know, that's PILT money that we've got to cover that. So then, where, you know, where we could use it to up everybody else's wages?
Do we know how?
It's just such a.
Do we know how the budget, as we're coming up to the end of the 2021 budget, do we know how we're looking as a whole? I mean, I know, I mean, I know you guys know, but I don't know. Oh, good. I mean, I know my budget is under. How are we looking in terms of, are we under maybe?
The general fund was like at 86%, I think.
Through the end of June.
There's a couple of them that are over budget.
Yeah, I know, because I was thinking maybe, I mean, it's not going to make up to 300,000, but I know my department is under because we didn't have as much, we couldn't go to training because of COVID. So we were able to get our, because we're required to get a certain number of continuing education credits to keep our licenses, Debbie and I. And we were able to do that remotely, so that saved the county money. And then also, I used to go to Missoula quite a bit, because we're in that judicial district. I don't think, we barely even touched travel, so we had some money there. And I know it's a different one-time thing, but that allowed us, I think, and I'm just speaking for the county attorney, just because that's the budget I know or know a little of, is that, so for this upcoming year, I'm going to ask for the same amount. I'm not asking for any kind of increase. So I'm just curious if there, if we were actually potentially, the 300,000 that public safety was over, was there other departments that maybe helped chip away a little bit of that?
Don't forget, you got your PERS.
So that would be the general fund, we were 86% and then he has his public safety.
Yeah, but I mean, yeah.
That's, yeah, as, the general fund.
Two different, two different funds.
Right, but then we didn't, but we didn't hit that 100,000, I mean, we didn't hit the 100%. So even though it's two different funds, right, yeah.
General fund didn't. Sheriff's office did.
Yeah.
It's all a crapshoot.
Right. Really, some of it out of your control.
It is, yes, no, no. And we, I mean, we run into that, I got a call at, I don't know, 7:50 this morning of another involuntary commitment potential.
Yeah, I mean, that's off the charts this year.
That's off, that would have been number six or seven, and we're in June. In some years, we have zero. And that's not budgeted for, and that's thousands of dollars. You, just like you said, Judy, and I'm just.
We're in terror cars.
Because, yeah, we, you know, you just don't know. We do try to control for what we can, but we don't know.
So I do have a question about the salaries or the wages for, not the elected officials, but other people that work here. Are we losing people because the wages are too low?
I don't think we're losing, but we're.
We're not attracting new.
We're just not gaining, just because nobody.
They do pay benefits to them, which I'm.
We get our health insurance and PERS.
They do pay benefits to them that probably, what, $10,000?
Oh, I know, I know, but still, the bottom line is.
Lawyers don't pay.
Yeah, I know.
That is true.
We're not losing, we're just.
Other people have to come up.
Not seeing new applicants, okay. Because I think that's really important, I mean, obviously, because I know I've been listening to the local news and, you know, getting employees is such a problem everywhere.
Yeah, a judge just said that in court on Wednesday to one of the defendants. How are you unemployed? There's no reason for you to be unemployed. Every place is looking for a job. So, I mean, everybody's looking for employees, but, I mean, that is, that is something that's true. I, to work for a place, to, absolutely, to be, to be fair and accurate, to work for a place where single employees, I mean, I'm not a family, where we pay zero towards our health insurance, it's unheard of now, other than vision and dental, which is, you know, you just, you don't see that. I mean, I don't know of many places that do that.
No, I know, I know, but some people, when they're looking for a job, yeah, they're looking at the bottom line.
Absolutely, or when you're younger, or when you're younger. I didn't need health insurance when I was younger, I didn't care. I would have rather had the couple extra bucks, but, yeah, that is something that, that's a good point, because you just don't see that anymore.
So we kind of had the discussion after the first motion without hearing the second one. Judy, is that still the same motion?
I can't remember the motion.
Do you want to restate it, or do you want to adjust it now that we've had all this conversation?
Hey, I'll negotiate another percent for the sheriff in my motion, how's that?
Okay, so your motion is a 3% for all elected officials plus an extra 1% for the sheriff.
Department, yeah.
So.
For the whole department.
You can do what you want after our recommendation, what you can afford, but, yeah. And it's only because, you know, it's true, the sheriff's department historically has always had a problem keeping people, because you can, the cities and the bigger counties can pay way more, because it was always based on your base pay. So you lose a lot of people, I mean.
Well, and it's a horrible job, you take it home with you, too, you know, I mean.
Well, true.
It's stressful, yeah.
I'd second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
So I have a question on that, though.
Well, there's still discussion.
Okay.
I'll just tell you what the motion is and the second, and we can have discussion. So the motion is for 3% for all elected officials and a 1% additional for the sheriff. Motion by Judy, seconded by Mr. Jasper. More discussion.
So does that include all the other officers or just the sheriff?
No, just the sheriff.
Just the sheriff?
Well, the sheriff are triggered by the state statute.
Okay, okay, so they.
The other deputy would automatically, so the sheriff himself would get a 4%. So then the deputies who are at 90% more get 90% of his 4%.
Okay, that makes sense.
Okay. That's why Judy threw in the extra one for the sheriff, so that it wouldn't just be 90% of 3%.
Because I think that's pretty good law, that changed.
I do, too.
Yeah, okay, anyways.
Okay. And, all right, any more discussion or questions on the motion for, from the Salary Board recommendation? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed, say aye? Okay, sounds unanimous.
But you guys don't make the.
Hopefully, a.
Yeah, we'll see what happens when our mills.
Some time, we'll see.
Hopefully, we can take, take your recommendation.
I really think the state has like, these little counties are losing out, because they're just, they're just not getting out there and catching all the new construction.
I have, I have repeated that and repeated that at my.
I mean, they need to put an office back.
They're supposed to do it every two.
Well, that's what Paulie was saying. She said when you've got people.
Thank you, everybody. Start, so then, you had to still keep talking about that topic. I just let Mary know we're going to start talking about the.
Hello, Kate.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Mineral County Museum and their Mullen Road conference coming up.
I love my glasses, I had a deer, I mean, I'm waiting for the other shoe to fall.
Were you on the interstate when you hit the deer?
No, I was heading out towards my plate, and I was watching the deer over here that had crossed, and one come up over the bank and right square in the middle of my hood. The only thing they're good for is on the plate with potatoes and gravy.
That's right.
Is that why I did not see your vehicle right around?
No, it's out there.
Oh, I didn't see it, the blue thing, yeah, okay. Okay, so you, uh, you guys are here to talk about your Mullen conference coming up and looking for some contribution?
Yes. Uh, you were generous enough to let us have a contribution last year of five hundred dollars. And when we canceled the conference, we returned the money.
Oh, you did?
Yes. And so we were, would be interested in having it again. I don't think we're going to have as many participants this year, uh, because of the bug.
I don't know. You look at all the other gatherings, Kate, and there's people coming out of the woodwork.
I, I know, but so far, we've only had four reservations.
Oh, really? Seriously? Wow.
But we haven't, we're not really at that stage. You sent out the feeler letter and we have
Contact us and
Seven to you or any positive response.
Yeah, we've had about sixty-some express interest in it. And we figured that at least sixty would, we would carry the conference. If it was less than that, you know, would it be worth it? But I think that because we canceled last year and that was the thirty-second, we don't dare let it go another year. And I'm afraid then it would die. Although next year, it will be in, in Fort Benton. And if you've ever been at Fort Benton on the River Walk, you know that's exceptional.
Are they going to go back to a May conference time?
Probably. I was talking to Ken Robison. Uh, he's a fantastic gentleman. And he will be hosting it from Fort Benton. And they, they do a wonderful job up there. And I got to stay at the Grand Union one time.
Were there any ghosts in there?
Pardon?
Did you hear any ghosts in there?
No, as hard as I sleep, nothing. Put my good ear down and get it.
Yeah. Yeah, maybe the ghost of Thomas Mark was knocking on your door, you didn't even hear him.
Probably not. I do know that they've painted it many times because the paint's about that thick on it.
But it's not, it's not lead paint.
I don't know. I wasn't in there when they took anything out, so I wasn't too worried about it. But we really appreciated your support last year. And because it is really important that we continue. And of course, we're asking that you be there Saturday morning, the eleventh.
When is it again?
Nine, ten, September ten, eleven, twelve, but she's looking for us to be there on Saturday, the eleventh.
To welcome our people.
And the welcome will happen at St. Regis in the square?
Yes, at the, uh, community center.
Oh, not by the John Mullin statue, but at the community center?
That's an idea, though. Hey, that is an idea, we hadn't thought of that one.
Oh, I was just assuming, but
Well, it depends.
Well, it's kind of hard to shift people back and forth.
There's a lot of truck parking there. The road is in terrible condition around the island that is Mullen Square. And there's always trucks idling with their reefers going and stuff, and the freeway noise. It's a kind of a noisy, yeah.
Well, I, like I said, I thought, that's a great idea, but as Glenn says, it might not work too well.
I think it'd be kind of congested.
Yeah, with the trucks there, you never know.
Yeah.
We normally, we normally keep the door open, but we had noise in the halls, we had to shut it. You can leave it open if
It's still noisy.
Oh, okay.
I put the sign out there, apparently, they're not reading it.
Yeah. And I thought it was you out there telling jokes or something.
No. No.
Okay, yeah.
I think it's a worthy cause and I will make a motion that we, uh, approve five hundred dollars to the Historical Society.
Mineral County Museum.
Oh, you want it to the museum, because I think before we had
Well, whatever we put on there.
Okay, so could you go, then go up to the clerk and recorder's office and pull out?
What we did last time.
Yep, yep.
I would second Laurie's motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to donate five hundred dollars, a contribution to the Mineral County Museum Historical Society Group to, uh, help launch and host a, hopefully, a successful Mullen Conference in Mineral County for the year of September twenty twenty-one.
Don't feel about about nine eleven. I didn't think about that till about a month ago, and I thought, holy catfish.
Well, we can have a ceremony for that, too.
Yeah, because it's twenty years.
Mm-hmm, that's right. So, any further discussion on the motion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it. And we look forward to having you there and having you enjoy our, our conference.
I haven't been willing to commit yet because I'm kind of waiting to see what my schedule looks like, because
Schedule?
Schedule, schedule.
It's going to be eighty dollars. And that is for three days. That includes the, uh, meet and greet on Friday night, lunch and dinner on Saturday, and a box lunch or sack lunch on Sunday for the, uh, bus tour.
Where is dinner on Saturday, Saturday night, where's that at?
That will be at the community center. Sue is going to talk to Strout about catering. Jerry will, um, cater. And the lunches, if St. Regis Senior Center can't do it, Superior's Senior Center will.
Oh, good.
And the Friday night meet and greet is at Trestle Creek.
Right. Oh, yeah. And we'll have finger food there, but you have to buy your drinks there.
Mm-hmm.
What, no bar tab?
Other than coffee, we'll have
Well, he was thinking that's what that five hundred dollars was
If you make it a thousand, we'll make it over thousand.
Okay.
Well, thank you very, very much. Did you have something you wanted to ask?
Um, yeah, I did, what was it?
That's me.
Oh, the computers. Oh, our computers are old. And we've always gotten our own computers, bought our own computers. But we were also wondering if you could help us with two new ones.
The Historical Society wants new stuff?
Yeah. Our Windows seven is not working well anymore.
I still struggle with mine.
So, um
Me too.
So, so you guys are looking for two?
Two, one.
Yeah.
Where, where are those kept, by the way? Where are they at?
They're at, in the museum and in what was room ten, which is right next to it.
The Mullen Room?
Yeah, the Mullen Room. Jim used it extensively when we did our last book.
So I'm just curious, why would you need two?
There's been networking issues all along. It's never fully been networked between those two computers. And they're both Windows seven, I believe, right? Which is just not supported anymore.
And we need a couple new programs because technology has outstripped us.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Need publishers for one.
Publisher and, uh, upgrade in, what's our
Seven to ten?
What's our
Grading of ours here?
Oh, uh, past perfect.
Then we can transfer those over to there. That's just a
I'm trying to think if we might have, well, I don't know if it'd be a Windows ten, though. I think Jim's probably the computer guy, would it have to be a ten?
No, not necessarily. Um, the other part of all of this is to what level, is it DIS? And that's the company that kind of supports.
Yeah.
Uh, because I don't think any of us really have the wherewithal, um, to properly network, um, at least in our, you know, finite amount of time. And, uh, to make sure we have a, a proper backup system, that's been a concern of mine for some time. We should, it'd hate to have a crash and lose all the pictures we have and the past perfect software and what it can be.
And right now, when I send out the notices for the conference, which is two hundred and eighty names, I have to call DIS and they break it into sections to send it for us. It will not send all of them at once. Which is annoying, so
So I'm wondering if we have any computers that DIS has disabled or replaced with ten that are still good? Sevens or something that would be
Well, there's, what is it, Vista in between those two that was generally panned? Windows eight, is it? Uh, but, um, that would still be probably better than seven in terms of at least having some support. But that's not a call I'm prepared to make.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering is, say, if the, I don't know, within the building, whose computers need updated here?
Yeah, why weren't they updated?
No, if, if then maybe there's, you could get their, it's not really old one, but, you know, the one that they're being updated if, if we could do that, maybe, look into that anyway.
So when you go up with your claim to kill Anne and Casey ask, Casey's supposed to run our data processing, which is the computer stuff, and maybe ask the question, are, you know, if there's some recently replaced computers that are still good, how many or whatever, and then if there are some, then maybe we could make that option to donate that. Mr. Hendrick?
Yeah, suggesting, the school has been upgrading their computers on a regular basis. And they have the best of the best. So you might talk with the business educator there and talk with him, see if they're in the process of getting new computers. Again, if they are, I've been using, I bought one from them, an old Apple one, a laptop, and I use that all the time, so it's, it's a, it's a good avenue to possibly check into. All right, that, between all three high schools that we have in our community that might check that out.
But anyway, you could talk to Casey and, because she would know what we have as computers, which, if we're going to be upgrading any in any of the offices and, you know.
And, you know, as I said, I, I think maybe having DIS in on the front end might also be a wise decision, uh, because they would probably be more prepared to address that, yeah, these computers are not sufficient for what you're trying to do, or they are. Uh, but I suspect the former, yeah. And in terms of making decisions, that we're not just swapping something obsolete for something that's slightly less obsolete or whatever.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay?
Well, we'll end that meeting, thank you, guys. Which is, uh, an auction update with Gordon Hendrick.
I want to thank you guys for giving me the chance to be able to work with such a great staff that I have come to know upstairs. Very professional, very proficient. And, uh, and at this time, I'd also like to make apology to you guys and to them for me pushing so hard to get this auction going.
Why are you apologizing? That's probably why it's happening.
Because I see what they've been going through. The paperwork, the jam-ups, the getting the certified letters to be signed and the hoops that they have to jump through, I wasn't quite aware of. But now that I've dove into this deep, and the deeper I get, the crazier it looks. And, uh, yeah, it, uh, kind of ties our hands on a lot of them, but we've managed to take care of one situation that he kept getting letters, uh, you know, of trying to get this resolved. And we found out that he had the title the whole time, he had the car. And it was sold during an auction here in two thousand fifteen that I, I wasn't aware of. I, I verified that, I checked with Jason, Jason said, yes, they did have that sale. And they said, I was there, and I thought, wait a minute. I don't remember that, because I'm sure I was pretty well complaining about it about that time, too. So anyways, that one was taken care of, so that's off the books. We have several other vehicles that are out there that are not on my list, such as the camper that's out there, that big Winnebago thing. Uh, anyways, so we'll need clearance from you guys to be able to get rid of the stuff that's been abandoned. Where no title, no ID, nothing on them. And, uh, I've got the, the list of which ones that I've sorted out. And we have the, uh, the Skidoo, whatever that thing is, Kawasaki five fifty jet ski that was abandoned. And we've checked all avenues, back and forth, but it sits there. And, uh, I mean, it's going to take someone to rebuild it, but it's actually becoming an antique now.
Mm-hmm.
So it's, a lot of guys are starting to look for it. That Fleetwood Motorhome is a nineteen eighty-six. That is sitting there since they deposited there. The guy threw the keys to the officer, whatever, said, you move it, I'm done with it. So that was pretty much the situation there. Um, one other one is, uh, there's, let's see, a green little, uh, trailer they used to put rafts on. No ID, nothing on it, it was also abandoned. So those are three vehicles that we could possibly get rid of right away. And we'd like to see some progress out there. And, uh, with her guidance and help, I've managed to kind of strum up a little short list right now. And if I can remember what page I put it on. Dun, 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 here we go, got it. Okay, we have two patrol cars that are in the impound lot right now, okay? So those will be coming up. I heard that there was possibly two more in, uh, you know, being brought out of service that are here. And then, like I said, the motorhome and the jet ski and that little trailer. And we've Boat, the boat, that's another thing. There's that boat, that search and rescue boat. What's the story on that? I have no, no paperwork, no nothing on that.
So Mike, what I remember of it
Mike Burns?
Mike Burns got a grant, remember? I don't know.
I remember he got the grant for, yes, yes.
Lori Dove would remember, because she was still search and rescue at that time. But he got that grant and that boat was part of that grant. Now, I was told, I believe there's two boats. I believe search and rescue has a boat that they still use on the river.
That's out there on the property.
Okay. This was, this was the very first one.
Yes.
This was stored someplace, got water in it and something cracked or broke, and nobody's messed with it since, that I know.
Okay, so what we need to
I didn't even know.
Yeah, we need to clarify what we can do with that. I mean, the sooner the better. And, uh, because I've had an awful lot of inquiry on that boat.
Really?
Oh, yeah.
Well, it's a jet boat.
Yeah, it is a jet boat. And I think the part that broke is probably part of the
Probably the
The engine itself.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it
That's what I was told, something froze and something cracked.
Yeah, but the boat itself is, is good. And the, the motor can be replaced. And, but it is money that's sitting there with the trailer and all that we could utilize right away.
Yeah.
Would that be something we're worried about, no?
I think so.
Maybe check with the search and rescue.
Okay, I will do that.
And I don't, if, if you ever talked to Boone, I think he was around when that all took place.
Yeah, I think, was it Boone?
Or Hopwood.
And I think it was Hopwood that was there, yeah.
Because I don't remember it, that was, you were up here before me and I don't remember it.
Yeah, I remember the whole incident. It, it sat up at Burns' property for quite some time.
I believe so, yeah.
And that's where it cracked. And I think he ran it ashore once, too.
Oh, maybe.
Yeah, but that's
I know they used it when they first got it and then they didn't use it anymore.
Yeah, because it went up in pro Anyways, that's a whole nother can of worms.
Yeah.
Um, Jason is going to, well, he told me he was going to get a list to me this week. It's Friday, but I know he's busy. I won't torture him again to see if I can get the list of, uh, stuff that he needs to sell, that we can sell at this auction at the same time.
I'll send him a text and see if he would give
Yeah, tell him to, yeah, if, if you get it, that, give it to Deborah. Uh, or put it in my box. I, by the way, I was sworn in, I am fifty-four, twenty-one. I love that number, twenty-one.
What are you, fifty-four or you twenty-one? I'm confused.
I'm so If you put them both together, I'm almost there. I'm seventy-two, so I'm almost there. But, uh, I'm going to turn the rest over to Deborah and if she has any inquiries or, uh, comments.
Would, would, Gordon went out and bless his heart, went to each car, took pictures. So now we've got a picture of each vehicle. And we've, we've tried to project it against my list, because my list was given by Sheriff Boone. Um, we have, yeah. That list is so overworked right now, but we have, we're going through it and trying to nitpick it to death to be able to come up with answers so we can get this stuff on the road. But the problem is, even some of the vehicles I have on, like that one is already given away to somebody and by title, by an auction. I had, that was on the list that I was given.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
So he was getting threatened letters.
And so he was like, wow!
I calmed him down.
And then we've got vehicles out there that are not out there that are on my list. So we're just
We don't know if they were sold during the two thousand fifteen auction.
We have no idea.
Wow.
And then even, but the good thing is, maybe a good thing, may not be such a good thing, but the title companies that Gordon is contacting, um, we're having to track them down. We're, because most of them are moved or gone or or longer there. And, and those title companies are classic, because they say, oh, we've destroyed the paperwork, we're not interested.
And that's
And so we're getting rejects on those. And so when I get those, those are more apt, the people that are going to have a claim than the defendant, you know? So we're, we're just working on it. Um, it's nitpicky, you know, trying to get there. I have the paperwork on abandonments that they use in Missoula. I talked to the, the people in Missoula, because I'd like to keep the paperwork somewhat the same, because our judges are all the same judges. They know that paperwork, they'll recognize it when they see it. And more apt to sign off than something brand new.
Right.
So, um, I've got that and they gave me everything and, and they've got some ideas of how they've been doing things, too. So I think we're, we're coming along. And Gordon has helped a lot, because, I mean, he's got the time to make the phone calls that I don't have the time to, to make. And half the time, you can't reach him and you gotta be persistent.
And he used to be in the legislature, so he's a good talker.
He is.
Amen, brother.
Amen.
And he's good at pumping up tires, too.
She's had, that's one thing I, I bring up real quick. She's had three tires out in the parking lot that have been flattened.
Oh.
So do we have a camera out there that we can catch the culprit?
We're on, we're on the video, so I don't want to reveal the secret, but...
You're on the video. Love it.
But we'll just, we'll just ignore that. Okay. But anyway, so we're, we're doing it, we're getting there.
I got ahold of one finance company that were just, they've been over backwards for us. Ernie couldn't believe it, he's, you did what? And I said, yeah, I got him, but he's, I'm going to call you the miracle worker. And I said, no, 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 don't do that, no.
The miracle, amen, brother.
Yeah. We found a lot of these, it is so hard to contact the people that are gone. Either they're deceased and we try to find any relatives, no luck. These cars have been here for so long, and still the point, we need some sort of a court order to release it, these vehicles in our possession, so we can get rid of them? Or we'll have to have the state step in and have them crushed out? That's the only other alternative we have, and we're going to lose money on that.
Yeah.
And I don't want to do that. So I might be coming to you through, yeah, on several issues and stuff that we might be able to straighten out with a little power from you guys.
Yeah, and, you know, a lot of them, we just got to show a trail that we attempt.
They tried, a good attempt.
And then the court will feel comfortable signing off. But, you know, doing that trail is...
Time consuming.
Really.
Not only time consuming, but...
Tedious.
Yeah, it gets lost in the mail, you don't hear anything more about it, you wait, you wait, you wait, and finally it comes back and nobody signed it, nobody did anything, but we got it back.
They signed the certified card, but they don't tell you what their conclusion is.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's just a way to, to try to...
And ones that promised to give us the title, didn't.
Didn't. So, I mean, it's just, you know, it's nitpicky, and I knew this was...
Yeah. I figured this was going to be a simple, little easy thing. No!
But we're getting, we're getting, we're getting through it. And that's the good thing.
Good, yeah.
And Gordon has just absolutely been, absolutely another pair of hands and eyes that can go through it, and he knows cars.
Yeah, so I, fortunately, I do.
We do have one that is getting notarized. Ellen made a deal with the defense that if they notarize and give us the vehicle title out there, that she'll go ahead and forego her fine or whatever. So we're working it that way, too. Plus, we, we had a couple that, that were gone for a while out of the county and then got picked up. So we were able to, we're able to find one of them, the other one's now absconded, so...
Yeah, on the run.
Yeah, so we're just, we're getting, we're getting there.
So in closing, we have that trailer homemade, we're going to sell, it's a cameo color. We have the jet ski, and we have the motorhome. Okay, we've got those on there, and the two patrol cars and the other two. So that, that gives us a step in the right direction. I'll get ahold of search and rescue on the boat, but they're going to have to deal through you guys also because it is part of the county. Right?
Do you also have the abandoned ones on there? Because we could, the abandoned ones I can get rid of, too.
Yes, I've got, well, those were the abandoned ones.
Oh, those?
Yeah, yeah. Yep. Sure enough. Oh, we do have a Honda car abandoned.
Yeah. There's, there's a couple that there were some deceased.
Yes, the deceased ones, we can't find any relative.
No.
But, but I'm going to order a death certificate and...
Yeah.
We'll find it, we'll find it, so...
Thanks to both of you.
Well, thank you so much for...
That's, that's no problem. I appreciate that. I appreciate you giving us the time to meet with you on this very important matter, and we will go forward from there.
Okay. So I didn't get auction one.
Who is this guy that just sat down beside you?
He's a neighbor, I used him.
No. He looks like he's from Webo or Ronan, I can't tell. Ronan now, but you know, he hails from Webo. That history there, Mr. Sheep Farmer? That's what they're known famous for in Webo, that Mr. Webo's name, the county...
Mr. Webo was the biggest beef producer.
Well, how come they have all that sheep's history over there?
Well, they do, but...
He wasn't a sheep guy?
He didn't, I mean, his, his whole processing plant that he built back there didn't process any sheep, it just had beef. That's because that's where the railroad head extended right to there, so...
Okay.
Now, we've passed paperwork back and forth.
But, but Tim the sheep guy? I didn't know about Webo being a beef guy.
Yeah, I'm Canadian.
I'm Canadian.
I'm one of the ice packs.
You are, eh?
Yeah, take off, there you go.
Yeah, Hozer.
Okay, so who's going to start off with what's new at the TV district?
What is new? What is new is that we're still getting calls about the reception for the TV district. And we have a situation that we would like to solve if we could possibly get it done. And also keep it in mind that we have a contract for an outstanding loan with the commissioners. So I'd like to have you consider a couple things to do today and stuff. We, we have an estimate from the... Did you, I guess you copy that? Did you see that estimate? So we talked to JP, I talked to JP Telecom, and what our most current situation is, is that we need to take channel 23 receiver that's sitting down here in the tree and doesn't have a good line of sight with the TV mountain up there. And we need to take that receiver and go up and put it up on the antenna. And if we could put it and mount it on the antenna, then it's going to look right at it.
And that'll eliminate a lot of calls.
I bet. Which he, I cannot, however I do it, it'll lock anything else, he will not quit giving up my mon, number. That, that in where the rub lies and stuff. So that, that is our current pressing issue. I was going to have Paul show up at the meeting today, I was hoping I could get ahold of him because he would really tell you what it's all about. Because he's sitting there watching his favorite program and it just fades away, and 15 minutes later it comes back in.
It's the wind.
Oh.
The trees. We, we don't know if the trees are in the thing like that, but he, Jeremiah, he can, he can pinpoint where that signal's coming from. And it's just, it's just not a straight line. It's just part of a, it's actually not the trees maybe up here, it's the trees on a ridge in between here that are actually, he's skipping over that.
What's the difference between the tree and the tower that you want to put it on? How far is that probably?
It's about 200 yards apart, but it's about 50, 60 feet lower.
The tower is lower.
Yeah, the, the tower that the channel receiver's on right now, which channel 13 is on the same tower, but it, it looks right at the transponder from the top of the Snowball Mountain up there and stuff.
Oh.
Looks right at it. You can, I mean, you can sit, we were sitting there one day with our field glasses and looking, you could almost see it. So it's just straight, but the channel 23 is not quite in the same location, it's in a different little tower and stuff. So anyway, we're, we're doing that. And I didn't talk to Gordon too much, but I came up with a grandiose idea that, gee, the federal government is being pretty liberal with funds and money and stuff that they're doing. So we currently have a little over 11,400 and some dollars in the TV account from the taxes. Our bill goes out in the fall, so we get the majority of the taxes paid in the fall with mobile homes and a few others coming in the spring and stuff. So there's about 11,000 dollars in there.
When's our payment due?
For them?
Yeah.
Promptly. Very, very shortly. I'm feeling the pressure, there's not that many days of June left and stuff. So we need to do one of the approximately third payments or whatever, some, some along that line in this June here. So someday when Jeff gets it in, we'll do a journal voucher transfer or whatever and get some money out of there. But if, if that, before we transition into that, I have an idea and a request, and I don't, it might just not go too much, but I know that the county's been allotted COVID funds and doing that, and I was wondering if there was any possibility that the TV district could access some COVID money.
Remember, I brought that forward at the last time I met with you guys to see if we could get in through the emergency broadcasting system? And that deals with the COVID money, that deals with the emergency use for the public?
Yeah.
And that's a very essential part of this community that we'd like to pick your brain and get some money.
Some of these, some of these criteria, we were able to get COVID money the first round because it was really easy, it was any law enforcement payments and the FICA and I mean, automatically qualified. So we, but some of the other things have like little rules on them, so I'll, but I'm going to be, if we don't know anybody here that knows an answer to that, whether it's ARPA money or COVID money, I'm going to be going to Helena for a executive MAKO, because I'm second VP now, so I will make a point to ask if we can get it to qualify either for COVID, ARPA, or maybe there's some DES thing, like you say, with the emergency broadcasting.
Yeah, I think that that was one of the criterias of the second payment for you guys was that it had to benefit the public this time. And that is one of the other avenues that we can look at through that, basically the emergency and serving the public at the same time.
Right.
That's why I tried to hit you up as soon as possible, as soon as I found out about the money.
So that's not really an answer that we need today, you know, that's a future type something to address and do that. But I thought it was a good time to, to make the request today and get it in and stuff because I, I don't, you know, I know we got to pay back money, but, you know, so it's like, gee, we take a certain amount of that money and get this work done and do that and have less to pay back. But, I mean, the way it is and the way the fund balance is, is that we really can fairly easily do both. I mean, we can make the payment and pay at least a third of the, the total bill is right at 15,000 dollars, so we can pay a third of that and still get this work done. But I didn't want to tab on the wall of doing that work while we're owing you money.
So is it these people then that will take that receipt and put it up on the tower then?
All for that 2,000 dollars?
For that 2,600 dollars?
And then they got to, they got to do some new cable and relay some things and do that. I mean, there, there was a lot of interesting things, but the other people that worked on that when they put this cable in, all those channels and everything else, they almost just threw it out on the ground, they barely covered it, so... So it, it's an upgrade on that part of it that it'll make things just better. And this, when, when we got into the crunch and borrowed money from the commissioners before, this was part of the project that was planned, but it was left off. I mean, we just, I said, no, no, we're borrowing money to finish the other part and get the all the antennas up there and get them pointed. And as a no-charge part of the project, he's going to take, and he's done the testing, but he's going to reorient the antennas, so there's going to be some increased broadcast strength for the other two antennas that are up on the tower and stuff. So anyway, we're anticipating getting that done, but we'd just like to be able to move with this one and see if we can get this, you know, part of the project done and, and then just be, in case there's some money might become available, we can take a look at that and do that part of it, so...
Yeah, with this whole ARPA money, it's, oh, you're going to get this money, but then there's no clear way of how we're supposed to spend it. MAKO's requesting us to just, yeah, put it in this fund, and then when there's clear guidelines on how we can spend it, then, you know, because we don't want to spend it on something and say, oh, no, that's not right, and then you got to take it back, so...
Well, you know, I just, I just thought it'd be nice for the TV district to get back to a point of, you know, we've got things squared and, you know, taking care of FARS on that side, and then if we have money to come out, I'd still, still wanting to exit left and get out of this thing, so... But I don't feel real comfortable with doing that with my name being on that contract, so...
We were just going to call you and see if you need to do a little side job.
So anyway, I would like to...
Aren't you bored?
Yeah, I'm totally bored.
Well, I'll tell you one thing, we appreciate you still.
Yeah.
Doing this, you know? From one neighbor to another.
So anyway, and like I say, we'll be making one of our payments there, 21, 22, and 23 for the 15,000 dollars. So basically, if you were paying 5,000 here, you're on track with that. But if we could come up with some money and, and, you know, do part of that, then we'll get it paid off and the contract all taken care of. Just to hope, but, you know, who knows what they, I mean, I've listened a little bit to what some of the counties have used their COVID money for, and I'm just like, whoa, that's interesting.
That's why I looked into it, it's very interesting.
Who's DS coordinator is?
Lori.
Lori Dove. Lori, yeah. If we, if we get this done, I, you know, Gordon and I have talked that, you know, we should go to the next step, and I just don't know how that would progress without involving Jeremiah from JP Telecom, is that we really don't have an emergency broadcast system set up that utilizes the TV thing. And at least, I don't know who, I'd have to look back at my notes of who was more interested in that. It might have been channel 13, but, or 23. I think the guy, the manager for the channel 23 in Missoula said that, you know, he'd be very interested in setting up an emergency broadcasting system to send out a notice to that. If we could do something where, you know, multiple stations could send something out, that's fine. But they got to know how to plug into it, they got to know how to get it on the, on the air and make it, you know, and then somebody's got to generate it from here and give it to them and go through the authorization that, yes, this is what we want out there and stuff. But, you know, I mean, you can't hardly forget the past with the chlorine spills and things like that, so there's something. Plus, all your magnificent bridge decks out here that will always be under construction.
Did you come down for my Marley?
No.
Got the same thing. Holy mackerel, what a nightmare.
Mr. Curt, you got a question?
Yeah, Mr. Reed kept mentioning a tower. Which tower is he talking about, Thompson Peak Tower or the lower one?
What do you mean the lower?
The, the TV tower is the lower one, the upper with the Verizon and radio, and that is up on the top.
But we don't have any TV, going to be up on the Thompson Peak Tower?
It, it wouldn't be of any advantage there. We, we went up there and actually we got worse broadcast signals by moving things up there. But what we did is take the three short towers and make 100-foot tower that really improved it, so...
So hopefully you'll finally have a solution to that, no more phone calls.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
With Mary Jo Berry and request to dispose of documents according to the state retention schedule. Mary Jo Berry and request to dispose of documents according to the state retention schedule.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
I just had a meeting with Dave Marish.
Oh.
Exhausting. Okay, so mine is short and sweet. Um, I went down and was going through the filing cabinets at the fairgrounds and there is so much stuff down there, but all of it is like, and I talked to Kellin about, about it. Clear back to 1996, I think some of those files are. And Kellin has all the information. It's just billing, um, yeah, just.
Oh, for water, electric, whatever?
Yeah, all the bills and stuff, you know, that they, that they did.
And she probably got them in the cloud now.
Yep.
Just redundant things?
Yep, just, and, but then there was a whole, there was a bunch of stuff. I also found a bunch of stuff that, you know, related to the fair, like old minutes, which I didn't really feel like I want to get rid of because I think it's just kind of a, you know, like a history type thing. So I kept those. And she sent me that form that comes from the state that says you have to have it for, yeah, like four years, six years.
Oh.
A retention schedule.
Yeah.
I can get one if you want it.
Isn't that what that is?
That's the form, isn't it?
This is for the destruction document.
Yeah, and it says, you know, that two years, four years, and six years. But two years, four years, and six years is still obsolete. I mean, it's all stuff that I can get rid of. So I just need permission from you guys to do that. So I can, I have the box with me, well, it's sitting at Durango's right now, but. So I have the files and then also the stuff that I don't want to, you know, that I don't want to get rid of. There's no storage space over there for me. Is there a storage place, any, any place over here?
Were we going to get some in the downstairs of the Wells Fargo?
Yeah, uh, you know, they're under, they're redoing some stuff over there, so we'd have to check and see if you can get it in there.
Is there any room out there in that where?
No.
Tim Reed had, you know, there was that.
There's the fire hall, there's the old fire hall office, the little more enclosed building within the building.
Where we go through to get to the van? There's a whole bunch of filing cabinet.
Yeah.
Oh, there's so much, that stuff probably should be going through. There, there is no room in that, I mean.
It's crammed full of stuff.
Yeah, it's full of, it would get lost, I think.
There might be some usable filing cabinet.
Are, are you looking for filing cabinet, for space for your box?
Space for the box. And I would, you know, not, I mean, just a couple of them, but I just don't want to put them someplace and then have them get lost because the, it's stuff that has, you know, from years ago. We were trying to figure out when Carol Johnson became like head of the fair board. Who was before Carol Johnson? And so, you know, yeah, without going through all that stuff, I, you know, I have no idea. But anyway, so I'm looking for some storage.
I remember some guy named Willie Hewitt or something.
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't, that extension guy, Willie, Willie somebody. I don't know, maybe Janet, I don't know.
So I'm looking for that. And then the other thing is, um, there was a computer in the fair office that nobody knows whether it works or not. So I took it home, plugged it in for like a week and it never did come up. So then at the last fair word me and Carol said, take it in. So I took it into the Geek Squad. And, and I talked to Deb Quip. Deb said she thought that that computer came from, um, oh shoot, that lives on fourth.
Dennis Hiller, right?
No, 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 Dennis. Robinson, Robinson, Robison?
Oh, the, the new computer work?
Yeah, she, Deb thought that that computer came from them, which the Geek Squad told me that the computer is no good. He said, it's over 15 years old, he said, and it wouldn't even start for them. So I don't know what I'm supposed to do with that.
So we, we just had the museum people kind of needing some newer computers and, and some of our Windows 7 got replaced by Windows 8 and then now getting replaced by Windows 10. So some of the stuff isn't workable here anymore because of our provider, DIS. So we might have some, we just told them this, we might have some good, relatively good computers that we just had to like forfeit because they're not compatible with talking to the other ones. That they're, if you go up and ask Kellin and Casey, there might be some good usable computers that we can't use.
But I could use down at the fairgrounds. Yeah, because I asked Deb what she did and she said she took all of her stuff home and she did everything at home, which, you know, I can do that. But if there was a computer down there, and they, they do have a printer, they bought a printer last year, she said, so. But do I need to, do you guys need to sign something so I can get rid of that computer? Or bring it up here and you guys get rid of it or? It weighs about five pounds. I've never, the computer is really heavy and it's got a battery in it, so it's old.
Yeah.
Does it have like a county ID tag on it?
No, there's no, no. Nope.
Well, it's a bit of a donated.
The only way we dispose of ours is through DIS, isn't it?
So.
Do you think that's a DIS computer?
I don't know.
I honestly think that Robinson probably just fixed it up and being, she was the fair board secretary at the time. That she just used that and then it just.
Left it there?
Yeah, and you know, and if it was left in the, in the fair office, well, I mean, it's been really cold in there, so. But he said he couldn't get it, they couldn't get it to come up, so. Which is too bad because it, it's a Dell and it looks like a nice computer, so.
At 15 years old, yeah, that stuff gets updated really quickly anymore.
So anyway.
So do you have it at your house then or?
The computer, yeah. I just, yeah, I was just in, what, today, Friday? So Wednesday I went into the Geek Squad.
And then if you strike out with Kellin and Casey for our, because they're our data processor, account people for computer stuff. Gordon was overhearing our conversation with this historical society. He said that the schools also have been upgrading their computers and they might have some stuff to give away. Usually what happens with updating computers, they just end up kind of recycling them. And if they're usable, they might just give it to you, so.
Okay, so I'll check with the schools or Kellin.
So should she just bring it over here and DIS can?
I don't know if DIS will take a computer, that isn't, you know, one of theirs.
Yeah.
Well, I think that they'll still, I think that they wanted some of them all to be the same for them to oversee when they're doing courthouse interconnection, but I don't think that they have a problem helping with someone who's just going to use it for basic.
No, as far as getting rid of it.
Getting rid of the one when they start.
Oh, getting rid of it, oh, oh. I thought you were talking about the new one.
I don't know where else, where do you work? If I gave it back to the Geek Squad?
Yeah, they recycle them there.
Yeah, they recycle it, don't they?
Probably charge it.
I could do that, I'm going back in, so.
Painted target them? Painted target them?
Yeah.
Then the battery would be.
Oh, no.
Yeah, so, cool. Well, that was easy.
Yeah, I would think, I mean, if this, until we can get to the vault up at Wells Fargo.
Yeah, we need to check on that.
I would think it's just a couple boxes, you might even just be room in the vault, just.
I don't think so.
Isn't there?
No, there's been a lot of, yeah. I don't, there's not people.
So HRC bought the old bank from Wells Fargo, but they're doing some construction up there. They told us that we could have the, the vaults for storage if we wanted to.
In the basement?
That's quite a bit of storage area there. But I don't know what, what the status is on, I know we didn't have a meeting there last month because they were working on it.
I just had to make some room, you know, it's like I spent one day in there and washed the windows and, you know, just tried it. Ken needs to get his stuff out of there, he's got, he needs to find a place to put his stuff.
I'm going to check his room, Mary Jo just said.
Okay, once he.
He just cleaned that up?
I know, I know. So then what?
What's that?
They just cleaned the cell, so they're, I don't know.
And I've been to one, but I forget, when do you guys have your fair, now it's summer, so your fair board meetings are coming up?
When, our, we, our next one is Wednesday.
Wednesday?
We're doing it for June.
If a few in a hundred.
Every two weeks and then in July it will be every week.
Every two weeks on a Wednesday?
Yeah, yeah, so, and we're meeting down at the fairgrounds.
Next Wednesday I'll be in Helena, but are you, their six o'clock meeting?
Uh huh, yeah. Yeah, we have Olivia Wayland. She was our new fair board member, Olivia Wayland.
Wayland, yeah.
She's, Wayland, she's been, she's good. She's a, um, pretty smart on the computer, so she's been helping getting the Facebook page up and she's going to help David with the parade and.
Hmm, cool.
So, um, yeah.
Well, when does Mary Jo also need to sign that destruction form? I think there's a place for her to sign and for you.
Custodian record manager.
Let me check with Jim and see what the status is on the construction.
And you know, I, there's, it's, right now it's in my basement of my house, but Bruce is like, you need to get rid of this stuff, so.
My wife tells me that all the time.
All these little piles, I've got my community outreach and I've got my veterans and I've got, you know, the fair board now and I've got all these little piles downstairs and so I thought, no, we'll just use that fair board like we're supposed to.
Yeah, so she, she would put, what she's going to do there and then sign that this is accurate, correct, and then, then I'd sign the bottom to authorize disposal of it. She, yeah, she submitted by Mary Jo certifying that the records disposed of are correctly represented below and then what it is and.
But she needs to get that out first, so.
Yeah.
Whatever the fuck comes out there and your signature.
But you don't have to do it now if you want to, because you have to fill in what you're getting rid of in those little boxes below that.
Oh. Okay.
I don't know, some kind of a description, I guess it tries to help you with the, whatever it is, but. Where did that form come from, Dawn?
I asked Kellin for it.
Hmm.
Okay, so I'll take it and I'll have to, like I said, go back and look. But I mean, it's like 96, 98, 2000, and then 2013, 14. No, not that one back because it said four years. So it's all before, and yeah, 93, so, all right.
All right.
Do that?
All righty, well, thank you.
I'll bring it back to you, Dawn?
Okay, yes, that would be perfect.
And then where do I bring the box when I come, when I bring this back?
Oh, I'll open up a shredding bin for you and we'll dump it in there.
Okay, that sounds good.
Yep.
Cool, thank you.
All right, thanks.
Good luck on that computer hunt.
Yeah, I'll go and talk to Kellin right now.
Has the lion's club or? Okay.